We will, uh.
We're recording.
We're recording, okay. And do we have anybody zoomed in? Anybody, like anybody? It's fine. I just wanted to know if like people had logged in. Okay, great. All right, why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? Uh, Luke, our other Eagle Scout, why don't you start us off? Sorry, Eric.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This still makes my hair on my neck, Sam.
Good. Love it. Okay, um, all right, today is March 28th, 2024. This is the special meeting of the Town of New Canaan Town Council, uh, which will include a public hearing today. We're starting at 5:00 PM, so thank you, everybody, for accommodating an earlier start time, and we can kind of shove off and get back to our lives, uh, a little bit earlier tonight. So if we could have the roll call?
Rita Bettino?
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Janet Fons. Luke Hoffman?
Here.
Mike Morrow?
Here.
Maria Norton?
Here.
Kimberly Norton?
Here.
Hillary Orman?
Here.
Christina Ross here. Eric Coonan?
Here.
Penny Young. Jennifer Zonis?
Here.
Uh, we have a quorum.
Yes.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order, uh, and our first agenda item is the minutes. Approval of the minutes for the special meetings held on Feb. 14 and Feb- uh, February 28th, 2024, and for the regular meeting held on March 14th, 2024. Someone like to make a motion if we want to open it up for discussion? Uh, Luke makes the motion. Second, Maria?
Discussion?
Discussion, please, Tom.
I'd like to propose that we defer approval of the March 14th minutes. I'm concerned about some of the content. It'll be easy to fix, but I don't think it's practical to do it right now.
Okay, any other, um, comments regarding, um, the, um, comments by, uh, Tom? Anybody oppose that?
Can you be a little bit more specific?
Yeah.
Well, th- there's at least one error, but I don't want to pick on anybody. I will say that, uh, I think it's important that the minutes be reviewed by the people that were involved in the meeting to be sure the numbers are right, and not all the people involved in the meeting, as I understand it, uh, had a chance to chime in before this was posted to the tablet. So I'd like that to be able to occur.
I- I suggest we just table this mo- for right now and have a discussion later time. We- we have to get, I really want to get to the people in the audience and the budget. They don't need to sit through, uh, discussion on the minutes as riveting as that could be. So why don't we just table Agenda Item Number Two for the time? Uh, let's move to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address, and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Uh, do we have any, um, anybody signed up? Okay, all right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Budget Overview. Review and discussion of proposed town budget for fiscal year 2025, including a review of the following budget and line items. Um, so why don't we just start off with, um, Emergency Medical Services, 15 minutes. Alec Montgomery, thank you. Floor is yours.
Hopefully, we don't need the 15 minutes.
Yes.
So I was told you're familiar with the budget. Do you want me to give a quick run through it?
Yeah, so, um, just so you're aware, we've had, uh, the Town Council's done, I think, an excellent job tracking the budget discussions from the selectmen's kickoff through tonight. So if you want to just give us kind of a top-line overview, and then if we have some questions, we can, we can answer.
Sure. I mean, the only thing that's interesting is that there- so, so there's really only three or four line items that are subject to approval. Some of them aren't really negotiable. But just so you understand, the first one, which is the paramedic service, is the top line of your budget presentation.
I'm sorry, if we can follow along, I'm just trying to figure out where to follow along. Do I look at?
Page 12.
Page 12? Okay, thank, thank you. I just want to be a little bit. I like, I'm visual.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you all unmuted your mics, Mike? They all need to be muted.
Yeah.
Oh, unmuted, yes.
I'm muted, yeah. Yeah, I did. Could you not hear? Could you not hear? Got it.
Just hold it down. Hold the button down. There you go.
I don't want to break it. All right, so on, on page 12 at the top is the EMS budget. The top line is the paramedic service, and you see the numbers have moved around a lot. If you're trying to make it, understand what's, what happened from 24 to 25, you probably won't, because, um, we went from a five-year contract with Norwalk Hospital at the 399,000 level that you see in '21, '22, and '23. '24 was, was while we were negotiating the new contract, and we were conservative, as were they, in it being too high. And the new five-year contract is at the level, um, that's recommended for fiscal year '25, at the 465,500, uh, 465,000 level. So it looks like our budget has come down, but it's just because in prior year, it wasn't finalized. Uh, the good news is that that number will be fixed for the next five years. It's a 16% budget from the prior five-year contract, which all-in sounds pretty good if you average it out over five years. Um, the next change, which is just worth, uh, pointing out, is that in prior years, we had a line item called the Town Contribution, which was a little over $60,000, and that contribution really went to our two budget lines, uh, vehicle repairs, maintenance, and medical supplies and equipment. So we've broken that 60-odd thousand into two line items that you'll see under Vehicle Repairs and Maintenance, the third line, and the Medical Supplies and Equipment, which is the third from the bottom line of 56,000. So the nine, the roughly 10,000 under Vehicle Repairs and 56.6 under Medical Supplies adds up to about 66,658, which compares to the prior year's budget town contribution of 63,000 for 65. That does represent a 5% increase. Um, the third line item, which we provide in this budget, is the Information Services. This is, uh, really the contract for our dispatch services, which the state provides, and it's non-negotiable. It's the number they give us, and it's a 1.1% increase this year. Uh, and that's really it. The rest of the numbers are generally utilities that are provided by the town, um, for us, so I didn't have any input into those numbers.
So, so just to be clear, so I understand, so it seems like you, that we were at a contract rate at 399, then, uh, '24 we weren't, it wasn't sort of solidified, and so we just put in a kind of a plug-in for the 525?
We thought it was actually going to be that high.
Got it.
But, uh-
But it's actually going to come in, but you've, we solidified the contract.
But it's been finalized at the 465 level. So that, that's finalized, it's signed, and that's what will be, we were in last, that is, the number that was effective last, for this current year, will be effective for the fiscal '25 year and for the next three years after that.
So for '24 and then the next four years, basically, it's going to be the 465 number?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
What's the thought on breaking out the town contribution into those two other categories?
Uh, I think that was requested just to, just to have a little more transparency as to, the, the line item town contribution didn't, uh, was vague. And the point was made, like, all of this is town contribution, actually.
Exactly.
That's what I was wondering. It's, it's not that we're, we're going to still pay for the vehicles and the medical services.
Yeah, it's, it's, we've just broken it out because that contribution was always effectively allocated to those two line items within our operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
The paramedic services that are up 16% over five years, that's due to inflation and the fact that Norwalk Hospital is charging more?
Yeah.
Everything's more expensive?
I, I mean, my reaction is that it's pretty low inflation, and, uh, the services provided through Norwalk Hospital EMS, which is operated within the Greater New Vans Hospital Network as a nonprofit, so it's really meant to be their cost pass-through. So if you look at the fact that they're providing us with the paramedic 24 hours a day, seven days a week, year-round, um, it, it just looks like a very reasonable number, not that the paramedics are paid that way.
And that, and that, the, the potential merger with Northwell, does that have any effect on that?
It shouldn't. I mean, it's a contract, so I, I, um, unless they can argue there's a force majeure or something, I don't think so. It, it shouldn't. I mean, we don't know what it means in five years, four years, three years' time when we see the next contract. But I, it, it should be, I assume they will continue to operate the EMS service within the greater group on the same basis.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully, better.
Thank you for the services you provide. It's incredible what we have from EMS in our town.
Well, I think, um, we all appreciate the support of the town, and, and, uh, it is, uh, yeah. We're all doing it because we enjoy it as well, so.
Any disruption in your service, um, due to the construction next door, or is that running?
Uh, we, I was a lot more nervous about it going into it because we're now limited to a single driveway, which is, which is a little tricky because the ambulance has to come in and out of that, and other traffic sometimes comes in, and we have delivery services, and I haven't actually figured out how the delivery services are managing it. But, um, we haven't had any, any problems. I mean, everyone understands to listen to their radios as they approach the driveway to make sure there is not an ambulance coming out, because that's the priority. And the cooper- the, the folks at Turner Construction have been terrific, keeping us informed whenever there's any potential disruption, and they're well aware of the fact that we need to have the access.
What have you been doing with recruitment for volunteers?
Um, the, the corps is in very good shape currently. The, I'd say the current dynamic is we have a lot more interest from high school members than we can support, because it's just, there's just some real limitations as to how many high school members we can support in really junior and senior year. Um, and we haven't had a lot of new adult members sort of coming through our EMT class, which is the, the best place that we source people. But for now, you know, I'm told it, it goes in cycles. That's all. And so while it's, you know, I made this comment to someone who's been around a lot longer than me, saying, uh, you know, we haven't had a lot of new adult members joining, but their reaction was like, yeah, you know, it, it, this happens. And the good news is that overall, we're, I think, about 55 to 60 active members currently, now ten are away at college and this and that. But we're in very strong, um, you know, membership.
Okay, great.
And everyone's writing their hours, and so it's, it's a, it's a good, good place.
Right, we, uh, the Town Council has supported that ordinance, remember, the tax credits?
Yeah.
How long was that? Two, two sessions ago?
Yeah, about two years ago.
Two years ago.
Right, so, uh, anything that we can do, uh, Russ, happy to chat, you know, to help continue on getting that strong recruitment, and I'm sure we'll all, all, you know, put our back into it to try to incentivize as much as we can, and whether it's new residents coming in, just even being aware of the potential tax benefits, anything we can do to support, I'm sure everyone would be happy to take it.
Appreciate it.
Just real quick, I just want to say that we have, my wife and I have used your services, and it's, it's, it's important to know how phenomenally excellent and nurturing the treatment is. But even more important, when we're not using the services, the peace of mind that you're being there and being so, so close by is, is invaluable.
Thank you.
So you, you really make a difference.
Two, two things, actually. I, I wasn't actually aware of, um, how great the service was. I was told more recently, because actually a neighbor is in, is a volunteer, Vanessa Antonioli.
Yeah, sure.
Or Landeger. Um, and I, I know a few folks who, they actually told me, um, that it was a service that, you know, I could avail myself of. Frankly, I actually wasn't aware of it, and I'm wondering, how do we make people aware of the, of the service?
Yeah, I was put in a taxi once for appendicitis by my wife and myself when I first moved to town.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. Um, I, I mean, Russ might have something to, to contribute there, but-
That's just something to think about, because I, I, I wasn't aware of it. Of course, I became aware. I'm now, I've been here for several years.
It's, it's no different than-
I've used it dialing 911.
Yeah, you dial 911 for an emergency, and you get, if it's a medical emergency, we come.
Oh, yeah, they come.
So whether people understand when to dial 911 is the trick.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. That's, and then the other thing is, do we, do you think that we're with the funds that you have and how you're, um, set up, that we're meet, adequately meeting the needs of the community?
Yes, um, yeah, absolutely. I think, um, I mean, first of all, w- we have a very nice setup relative to some of our neighboring towns, I would say, in not only the, the way the town supports us and the infrastructure, you know, the station we have and everything, but the culture and the 100% volunteer culture, other towns of these hybrid structures, and it just gets poisonous, I think. So, I shouldn't say poisonous, but di- much more difficult to manage, I think, from my perspective. And, and we have everything we need to, to maintain it.
Okay.
And, and that's evidenced by the fact that we have a strong core of volunteers who, you know, hopefully aren't going anywhere.
I, I mean, I've used, I've had to use them, unfortunately, for one of my kids, and, uh, I couldn't tell who was the volunteer EMT and who the Norwalk paramedic was. I, I knew once he got in the car, but the people who came in my house didn't wake up my other do- my other child and didn't upset my dogs, which is completely unbelievable how professional and wonderful it's gonna be.
Yeah, and we've heard, I mean, the Norwalk paramedics are all excellent, and we have great relationships with them, and I think they also appreciate the fact that, you know, the fact that we're all volunteers, that we're not, you know, as opposed to, you know, they, they got paid EMTs down in Norwalk, and they work them hard.
Yeah.
But we're all trying to do our best, and, and that's, that's a big part of the job, right?
We do it very well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. If there are no further questions, you're dismissed.
Thank you.
Russ, you're up next. Okay, so, uh, next up is Office of Emergency Management, 15 minutes, via Russ Kimes.
15 minutes, start the clock. All right, I will share my screen. And, uh, as instructed, I will keep it brief, and thank you, uh, thank you for reviewing the materials that we presented in the other departments. That's great. So, uh, I don't need to go through our mission statement. I think, uh, everyone, for those who don't know, I'm Russ Kimes, I'm the Emergency Management Director for the Town of New Canaan. Uh, I've been in the position since 2020, but full-time since '22. Uh, I've volunteered as the Assistant Fire Chief for 26 years, and I also was fortunate enough to ride with EMS for two and a half, three years as well, uh, which my father was one of the founders of, so.
Are you in the reserves right now?
What's that?
Are you in the reserves right now?
No, I'm out of the Marines. I did my eight years, and I was good. So, uh, as you've seen this, I won't really go into the details, but, uh, we've been, obviously, as emergency management, we've been very busy, uh, this last year, in particular, hosting a lot of training and events, not only in New Canaan, but regionally. Uh, things such as, uh, recovery from mass violence events, tabletops that we've done. You see representation from everything, from police, fire, health, EMS, um, our Human Services Department. I think the biggest thing about what we do as a function is bring all of those key players across the management, as well as the second-level management across, together to work through very difficult scenarios and understand exactly how to react, uh, including, for example, school reunification training, uh, which we just did, another one, uh, I didn't even get it into this deck, um, not a month ago. We held, we hosted the State of Connecticut's Emergency Preparedness Drill, uh, at the New Canaan Library, which is fantastic to use their new amazing space. Uh, they've been great partners, and we had representation from all 11 municipalities in what we call Region One, which is basically Fairfield County. As, uh, part of our capital budget last year, we provided, um, body armor, uh, as well as, um, uh, Stop the Bleed kits and first-response kits to our firefighters and EMTs. Uh, we are looking forward to having in, uh, in the next couple of months, subject matter experts who provide training for fire and police, uh, and EMS to work as a team. Heaven forbid we have an active threat scenario. We also, uh, have managed our PPE and disaster supplies, as we've seen after the pandemic. We were in a period there for several months where we did not have, uh, and no one really had, the requisite personnel protective equipment to protect our first responders. Uh, and thanks to the help of our interns, including Toby Woods, as you can see here, we, uh, went through and refreshed all of our, uh, PPE at no cost to the town, uh, through the State of Connecticut and through some very careful analytics to figure out what our burn rate was during the height of the pandemic. Um, we've responded to incidents, whether it was a, a fire at the Police Department, where I worked with and requested the Fairfield County Communications Team, uh, to bring their incident command vehicle and communications trailer to stand-up communications when our system went down, uh, to the, running the op- helping to run the operations at the family fourth. Um, we've obviously had emergency responses with flooding. I hate to say it, as we've seen the last, at this point, what feels like two months, it's just been raining non-stop. Uh, and we also hosted FEMA and Tex- Texas A&amp;M University at no cost to us, who brought in instructors from across the country, uh, some of the, uh, the best in the country, to run a large-scale tabletop exercise for all of our department heads handling a mock city, uh, with a hurricane scenario. Um, and, uh, it was a great exercise, and I think everybody learned a lot, thanks to Grace Farms, uh, for allowing us to, uh, for the location. Um, so moving into the budget, um, starting up top, you have your, uh, salaries line, full-time, provided to us by HR. Part-time, as you see, was removed during the Board of Selectmen. Um, I am optimistic that, uh, with the new Assistant Fire Chief position and discussions with the players there, that, uh, I think there's symbiosis there for that Assistant Fire Chief to fill that role. They'll be right across the street. They have a background in the, uh, the field. Uh, it is very important for us to have a deputy because I, I'm out of town for training, or I'm, uh, whatever it might be, funeral leave. Uh, it's important to have another person, because as we know, with large-scale incidents and hurricanes, it's a 24-hour operational period, uh, and you've got to have that 12-hour and 12-hour shifts for it to be successful. Uh, moving on to the first line, uh, service contracts. Uh, service contracts is down, and service contracts is made up of our Everbridge license for 9,000, uh, which is what we use for call-outs to our residents, which we're expanding, as you may have noticed in Deanna's newsletter, um, and we will be marketing heavily, uh, coming up in a couple of weeks here. Uh, we're using that tool to do more, to allow for public works to send text message notifications of road closures, to send emails to residents when we have planned events and traffic problems, uh, for police, fire, and EMS to provide notifications to residents as well as education. Um, so we're expanding a tool, but it's there. We're paying for it for emergencies anyways, and we're working in partnership to, to increase its capabilities and use. Uh, the other thing on there is we, uh, pay $8,400 towards UASI, which is a regional radio system. That is our share of it. So that's what makes up our social, or, uh, service contracts line. Uh, our onsite contractors line, uh, I removed that request this year. That was, uh, for, uh, an electrician, to be on-call for our generator, our tow generator, but our tow generator is currently at the, uh, Temporary Police Department. So it's hooked up. It's not doing anything. There's no reason for that line to be there. Training is for outside instructors, hosting fees if we have to pay any for facilities, and any food for participants beyond what I have in the, uh, the food line, which is only, uh, $500. I ended up spending more than $500 last time with the Grace Farms event alone, because we had 44 participants. And the old rule is if you feed people, they'll show up for training.
Russ, if you get a group like the Texas A&amp;M guys come in and run a, a workshop for you, what, what are we paying for, for them?
Nothing.
Nothing?
That's the beauty. So my goal with that line is to not have to hire, uh, private contractors, instructors. Uh, I am aggressively smoking out and booking things in '25, '26, because those are funded through Homeland Security, uh, including their travel, their hotel, and everything. Uh, so where I can capitalize on that, I'm doing it. And there's, they have some incredible instructors, and, uh, the same goes with trying to send our people out to sites as well. Uh, repairs, emergency equipment, we are custodians for a number of state assets. So we have a people shelter trailer, an animal shelter trailer, the CERT trailer, uh, big orange signs that you've probably seen that have text on them. Those are state-owned, and we're responsible for the maintenance as the custodians. Meals and events, pretty straightforward, feeding people when they come in. Uh, supplies general, books. Uh, I think what Deanna learned, uh, when I gave her all of the emergency plans that were about that big, got to print them out, uh, because you can't entirely be relying on power or internet. Uh, voice and data is up this, uh, year-over-year, and I've transferred funds from some of the other lines to, to cover that. And the reason is, is we have one Starlink-ish now for the town, uh, which is, for those who don't know, that's Elon Musk satellite internet, and as we've learned now, two times, with the cutting of the fiber cables in Norwalk, as well as, uh, just the random outages that have occurred, uh, we need to have one means to be able to run our emergency operation center where the back hall is not relying on local infrastructure. So that's the annual fee. Uh, it's $250 a month, so, uh, the hardware's purchased. We don't have to buy that again, and that gives us enough to run the EOC. Our voice-over IP phones totally devoid of any infrastructure. God, heaven forbid we have a large-scale hurricane or something like that. Yeah, it's, it's really impressive. Uh, and then, uh, uniforms and equipment, $3,500 of that is for CERT. That is, um, I, I lobbied hard several years ago that CERT provides us an invaluable volunteer service to our community, uh, and we provide them through those funds vests, reflective vests, street signs, replacing equipment, radios, uh, whatever they need. We, they have done amazing work with, uh, fundraising, but they need that little lift, uh, to continue their mission.
Could you just explain what CERT is?
Uh, community, sorry, yes, I use acronyms a lot, so that's the legacy of the Marine Corps. Uh, it's Community Emergency Response Team, uh, and it's a group of volunteers that, um, falls under, whenever they're activated, they're activated by the Emergency Management Director, and that covers them under Title 28, which means that they're part of the Civil Defense, or civilian, uh, Civilian Reserve Corps, so similar to a medical reserve corps or something like that. And they're a group of about 100 volunteers here in town who help, you've probably seen him at Fourth of July, and caffeine and carburetors directing traffic and cars and things like that, but their mission is far broader than that. They're the only bodies I have to throw at a problem as an EOC, directly under our remit, so they help us to run the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. They're the ones who man the phone banks when we step up the 4100 line and people can call to get information. Those are the individuals who do that, and they're invaluable at that. And the last one is Equipment Emergency, which the projects I have slated for that is, is we have about, about 200, I think, 250 MREs that are up in the attic of, uh, Irwin, which are expiring. Uh, and so my hope is to have at least, uh, at least 100 MREs, preferably 200, because our maximum shelter size in partnership with the YMCA is 100 individuals, so have food for the first day, at least, until we can get other plans in place. Uh, and that's the only line that I have to- Meals ready to eat.
No, I know what they are, but I thought that they were like astronaut food.
From the 60s. How do they stay fresh? Like, are they?
They are not fresh.
No, they're definitely not fresh.
Yeah, okay, I know, but like, they don't expire.
They, they last, depending on the po- climate, and there's a whole temperature-climate curve to them. They're military rations that are loaded with a ton of sodium, uh, and, uh, they stay good for anywhere from five to 15 years, depending upon the temperature, so, uh, they, they hang on for a long.
Like a cache of them in the basement of the school from like the 50s in a fallout shelter?
Yes, we still have some from the Jim Cole era, which I need to get out of the basement of Saks. The problem is, is that I can't get to them because they built the new Saks around it, so we can't get a vehicle to it.
It's encapsulated?
Kind of encapsulated. I gotta go up a bunch of stairs to get it out of there.
There's no tang in it.
Right.
There's no tang in it. You're too young for that reference.
Uh, so, obviously, refreshing that, um, the, you know, that's, that's the, the bucket where we can purchase those supplies, those emergency supplies. I was very successful this year, uh, in the fact that we were able to get all the PPE from the state for free. Jenna, uh, Jenna in the Health Department was great partner with, got us a bunch of cots for free from the state. So we're always looking for ways to find and source those things, uh, at no cost.
Russ, I have a question. When you were referring to CERT, you mentioned Title 28. What is Title 28?
Uh, state code where they're protected. Basically, it says that because they're mobilized and we sign off on it, they're protected from an insurance workman's comp, that kind of scam.
It's state, not federal.
Correct. That's my understanding, is it's under the state's workman comp. But, uh, if not, I will get back to you. I will double-check that, though. But it means that they're covered, so we have to do an oath. I actually did an oath of office today for a CERT member, uh, who came in. So every two years, we do that to make sure we know who they are, and every mobilization is tracked.
In terms of communication, there used to be a Facebook page and Instagram page. Do you have any of those in a different, in addition to the Everbridge system?
Yeah, we still have a Facebook page. Uh, we have a Facebook page. Uh, we don't have Instagram or X, uh, which I suppose we probably could explore going into X, but our, our primary means of commer- communications for emergent, of course, is, uh, using Everbridge and that platform. And like I said, we're now going to move to use it more broadly, so not just phone calls. We can send emails, different levels of notifications, emails being the lowest, text message being a step up, and then obviously, voice call for something incredibly emergent.
Right, so what triggers an emergency outcall? Like, because I know there's been a couple of storms, and I was just curious what, when you decide to make those outcalls.
Yeah, it's a good question. So there's, there's not a set policy or procedure. It's done in consultation, obviously, with the first selectmen, um, as a direct report, and as with everything that we do with emergencies or any declaration, which we haven't, uh, thankfully, had any declarations recently. Uh, it's done in consultation with the team, the department heads and leaders. I've always personally kind of kept a 10% of power outages and higher is where we would start that communications process. But again, it depends on are there critical facilities involved? Do we have major, uh, infrastructure damage? Maybe your power's still running, but you have others. So it, it's not formulaic, I, I hate to say, is the, the answer.
Yeah, the 10%, that gives me a guideline. And then in terms of expanding the services, do residents get to opt in to further communication, or is it just a blanket, like you're just sending it out?
They do, uh, and in fact, uh, it's, we did a soft launch, but we'll be marketing it heavily in a couple of weeks, where they will have buckets that they can choose. I want to get public works, but I don't want Health Department. I want this, I want that. And they could unsubscribe at any time. They can't not opt in to emergency communications. That box is always checked, because obviously, that's the, the most important. because obviously that's the most important, and the reason we have the tool.
That makes sense. One last question, the Starlink, how is that going to affect the emergency communications in terms of needs for, you know, there being information that EMT can't, EMTs can't get information, the fire department can't, how is this going to make that better?
So it is, we, when we posited this, and I, and I think you're framing it within the context of cell phones and cell coverage, is it's cost prohibitive to deploy at scale. The actual unit itself was $2,500 in the mount and everything else, and then it's $250 per unit, per month. We have, on a police, on a day, I'm making it up, but, you know, six to eight units on the road, depending with supervisors, fire would have, it, the, once you start to scale it up, it becomes incredibly cost prohibitive. I think over time, we'll see that perhaps with, as they move forward, we'll see that the prices will normalize with it, right now, they're kind of the biggest name in the game, the only name in the game that provides that kind of service. But it does not replace the ability for them, currently for the mobile data terminals, as we call them, where the, the, basically, a cellphone in a car that creates the Wi-Fi hotspot in the vehicle for EMS to get patient data, or for PD to run license plates and things like that.
So is there only one unit that you have?
There is one unit in town, and it's removable, it can come off the car, and we can throw it in the parking lot and run a wire into the building to keep things running.
So you, you have that?
Correct, yeah, it's on my.
So that's the backup, if there's ever a Wi-Fi outage?
Correct, and it's, it's mounted to the car, because if we have somewhere where we don't have cellphone service, at least for that area, I can throw a Wi-Fi hotspot if it's a major incident.
I see, okay, thank you.
All right, hey, capital.
Yep, capital. The only thing in capital are two items, one is the continuing the payment of our Motorola contract, that's a five-year contract, that sustains our software and hardware, it's 139-226 this year, and then we are asking for an additional three Motorola all-band radios. We're just buying three a year to build a cache that we can use these radios. Right now, our, and I don't want to get into the, too heavily into the weeds on it, but we are on a VHF system, which means that our radios, our two-way radios, can't talk to our neighbors. A lot of our neighbors are moving to the state infrastructure, and that's on 800 or UHF, so they can't talk. This radio can talk across all of the bands, hence the name, they would be reserved really for your senior leadership, right? This is, we're not giving these to every patrolman, every firefighter, this is for your decision-makers and your key players to be able to leverage the UASI system that I alluded to earlier, and then these don't go bad in, you know, five, 10 years, so if we decide to move to the state system when our contract with Motorola expires, we don't have to buy new, this helps us to cut into that cost of replacing radios to move to the new system. Communications is everything in emergencies at the end of the day, and you can't rely on, in a true emergency, you can't rely on a lot of your traditional infrastructure, so by owning it and having this is key.
Especially when we have to communicate with, you know, our agreements with the other towns and shared services, so.
And any major incident, and I'm sure the Fire Chief and Police Chief have said it, that any major incident, we're, we're relying on help, mutual aid from our neighbors, we're a small town, we're a small municipality, so we've got to be able to talk to them.
Russ, that top line, that reflects the contractually agreed-upon numbers?
Yes, that is correct.
And you said you're buying three more radios at, that's $33,000 for the coming year?
Correct, yeah.
Why does that go up and exist in every other year? Are we buying three new radios every year?
Yes.
And are they rising in price to reflect that?
That is my best guess of the increasing price over the years, it is literally a best guess, I have no information for Motorola as to their future pricing schedule, just given what I've seen, that's an estimation, just so that, especially on the five-year capital plan, I'm reflecting as accurately as I can.
Does buying three more just add to the number and it keeps growing?
Correct, and we'll issue those to police and fire and to their leadership. We, to be honest with you, we're getting our first three that we ordered from the last year's budget, we're ordering them now, and we'll see them in 26 weeks, yeah, it's pretty unbelievable. But once we get those three plus these three, we'll evaluate whether we wish to continue down that path or not.
Presumably that number would stabilize somewhere.
I would hope so, yeah.
Just a point of curiosity, does the all-band automatically mate with, say, Darian, or do you have to tell it what Darian's system is and it'll find the meeting?
You program them with what's called, all the radios will be programmed the same, what we call Fleet Map programming, and it's got a digital display, and you select zone, and you scroll to Wilton, Westport, Weston, Easton, and one of the projects I took, which I would have never been able to do if I wasn't doing this professionally now, is I worked with all 11 towns, including Shelton adding them in, to get a agreement across all of them, across all of their CEOs, that we can share each other's frequencies, and that was approved by the state, so now all of us can program each other's things, because again, these are all individual FCC licenses. Yeah, it's, it's a tangled web, without county government, because if you go a lot of other places, they have county, county frequencies, and county, we don't have that here.
Okay, any other questions for Russ? Thank you, Russ, you are dismissed.
Thank you, sir. Oh, and my last bit, the ordinance for fire is working, combination of, it's not solely the ordinance, but a combination of a new Fire Chief who has been outstanding, Albi has just been incredible, and then the ordinance is helping to retain those people, they want to make extra calls. I am getting asked regularly to get the quarterly updates of, how many calls am I at this month, Chief, because they want to know where they are on track, whether they qualify for it or not, so it's, it's working.
That's great.
We really appreciate.
Come back if you need more help, we're happy to.
Appreciate it.
I will say the Everbridge and getting those messages, it's reassuring, just knowing that, you know, we're getting those updates.
And it's tough, don't get me wrong, you don't want to over-communicate where people, basically, boy who cried wolf, unsubscribe, and that goes back to your point of, it's not formulaic how you decide what, what is and out, so there's some pragmatism in that, because we don't want people unsubscribing from it either.
Yep.
Thank you, Russ.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, General Government, Josh Kaufman.
I was German in college, so come on.
Josh, I'll have you know, I don't know if you noticed, that Mike said your last name.
Kaufman.
Kaufman.
I was German in college, buddy, it was one of my minors, so, you know.
I say it for ease.
It's a great last name, by the way.
That's right. Okay, so General Government, 10 minutes for about 19 departments, so.
And you're lucky to have the.
Yeah, I needed it, if there are no questions, then that's fine. So I'm going to start with the expenditure side of things, and just stop me if you have any questions. So, we're starting with the First Selectmen's Office, the First Selectmen's Office is down 1.29%, this is driven by four factors. The salaries part-time is down 30%, the town right now is evaluating all of their kind of part-time needs, and as those needs drop off, we're paring back on some of the part-time. Economic development, a number of projects that are being completed in FY24 is, is affecting the amount that we need to put in for FY25, so that's down 48% as those projects roll off. Meals and events, these, this is up 1.5K, this is supporting really recognition events, retirements, the two major employee events every year, like the Christmas party and so on, so in FY24, this is closely, more closely matching what the actuals are for this year and last year. And supplies offices up 1,000, that's to support a color copier on the third floor, the basement and the first floor have their own, so now we're getting one on the top floor for, for us to use. Any questions on the First Selectmen's departments? Okay, on to finance, finance sees an increase of 5.27%, this is driven by salaries part-time is up 17% due to an increase in the, the part-time salary of the treasurer's position, overtime salary sees a 5,500 increase. This is really, as we're kind of streamlining some of the processes within the finance department, and, and considering whether or not another full-time employee position would be a good move, we're kind of covering some of those with overtime before that decision is kind of made. Training is up about 5,000, this is kind of a cyclical line item, this is to, this includes an in-person event for GFOA, that's kind of the Government Financial Officers Association, and so Ann and Diane are going to one next year in FY25, and this covers any munis trainings, which we have every year for our department, as well as other departments partaking. And the professional service audit is down 14%, this is reflecting the actual cost from the previous year, and we kind of have some fluctuation built in due to currently being in an RFP process for that. Any questions on finance? Okay, on to the tax assessors department, that is up 4, 5.41%, that is, the increase is actually mainly due to the 401A contributions, and I should say, this is going to be a trend for a couple departments, as part of the Town Hall Union contract, that the employee, employer match went from 6% to 7%, I believe, it went up 1%, so you'll see kind of a corresponding increase in the 401A contribution across.
What is the headcount for the, the unionized staff?
For all of them or just the assessors?
Or just three?
It's three.
I'm sorry, two.
And overall, for the town employees, do we know that? Overall, for the town, meaning?
For Town Hall Union?
Town Hall Union, it's all right, don't worry about it.
Twenty-ish?
Yeah, it's, it's a smaller group, but yeah.
Josh, is 401A always equivalent to match?
Well, that's, so this is the town's, the employer contribution to it, so this is what the town is matching.
Met, so that's, there is no other 401A other than the matching contributions?
Correct. In the budget, at least, yeah, yeah. Aside from that, there's a 2,500 drop in service contracts reflecting quoted price from QDS Cloud Software, that's the Tax Assessors Software System. Any questions on the assessor? Okay, on to the tax collector, that is up 3.16%, salaries part-time is dropping by 50%, again, evaluating part-time needs and paring back in as many departments as possible. Training and travel is up 700 and 150, supporting the new, supporting a tax collector certification for the new, the new employee down at the tax collector, it's not a, an additional employee, but it's just a replacement employee. Any questions on the collector? Okay, on to legal, legal is at 400,000, that's flat from last year. We're anticipating a decline from the peak in FY23, there is a DPW union contract negotiations happening in April, but we've been told to pretty much keep this flat.
Is there any expectation that this recent suit by the woman in Shelton about the sidewalk, is that going to impact things?
It hasn't gone to that level yet, so we're not sure, because of the reporting requirements and things that haven't been reported yet, so it's still in the investigation stage on whether we would be liable or not.
Can that go through?
Yeah, it goes through our insurance, so we don't, yeah, thank you, we don't even have the deductible if that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One second. I mean, just so I understand, is this, we have a retainer and also an hourly, is that how that works?
Correct. So the way, the way we budget legal, at least, is all of the budget is in professional services legal, and as the bills come in, we kind of separate it out into the different departments that it hits.
Yeah, thank you, Deanna, if you can.
I was just going to say, that budget number was built in consultation with Birch and Moses, and we went through, and we had initially a higher budget number in, and Ira said, you know, I feel very comfortable with you lowering the budget for next year, so, so that's what we did.
What, that's awesome, what's, do we know, how do we break out difference between what's retainer work versus like an hourly?
Yeah, we've, we've, they've been, it's a, it's always an interesting conversation, we've started to say, this is, this is on retainer, right? It's really kind of, the, the questions that we have, that they don't have to spend a ton of time doing research or writing, you know, a big brief on, that's all covered under retainer, but, you know, if they're going to need to, you know, get associates involved or, you know, do a lot of research and write a brief, then that'll go to the hourly rate. And just good news, we just, you know, it's a little early, but we are going to have the same rate, hourly rate for the next two years and the same retainer rate, so.
Great, usually don't get that from a law firm, I can assure you, so.
They weren't, they weren't maybe thrilled with that.
Thrilled, yeah.
Question on litigation, so I would imagine most litigation goes to, covered under insurance anyway, like a slip and fall or things of that nature, so I don't, can't imagine they do really much litigation defense.
Well, we have a lot of A3G.
Does the litigation for, under A3G or the three car, whatever, the three projects, does that fall under planning and zoning, or is that?
No, that's ours, that's, that, yeah.
All right, there you go, all right, thanks. Okay, next. On to human resources, so HR is up 2.6%, this is driven by state drug and alcohol testing is up 1,000, the cost of performing these tests has increased, so, so is the budget, training is up 1,000 also, HR kind of supports the other departments in terms of taking on some of the weight of, of when they run out of training budget, so it's kind of been bumped to, you know, represent the need that, that departments have had, and advertising is down 2,500. Most of the town's job postings are done through ADP, not posted on, like, we don't post them directly on places like Indeed and so on, so that cuts into that advertising budget. Any questions?
What's ADP?
That's our payroll software.
Okay.
Yeah. IT, IT is up 20, almost 27%, the full-time salary line is up 23%, this represents the addition of a new full-time employee, the Network Systems Engineer. The IT department was, started in 1998 with two staff members, they got their third staff member in 2003, and so it's been about 20 years since they've had an increase in their, in their number of employees, and, you know, in the past 20 years where we've come from IT needs, you know, they're kept pretty busy, the three that are there, and definitely need that support of that fourth individual. Service contracts are up 40,000, 30,000 of which is the Open Gov, that's now being integrated into their, into their departments, it's, you know, it services multiple departments, health, building, land use, and so on, so it's, we're keeping it kind of in its own segmented place in IT department. And $700 for voice and data, this is just basically new devices for the anticipated hire. Any questions on IT?
So is cybersecurity a big piece?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, so.
Which we will not second-guess.
No. I'm just curious, is it for, for the IT individuals, is it more just tech support, or is it like, do you have developers that are on staff? No, it's just tech support?
I mean, they do, obviously, they're kind of all on-call to support all of us, but they're, you know, going from building out the new software, system upgrades that we're having right now in Town Hall, so our computers are, crawl a little bit faster, they have, you know, the work they've done downstairs is impressive with the new graphics cards upgrades and so on, you know, the poking and prodding they do in terms of cybersecurity, testing out our employees to see, you know, if they notice an email that's kind of suspicious, or the trainings that they put together for us, it's, I think it's just an ongoing kind of process, in terms of actual program engineering, that's a good question.
Yeah, I'm facing that at my own company, so that's why I'm asking this question, because there is a balance between like bodies and.
Right.
And what they're doing versus what you're outsourcing.
I think part of the problem is, you know, when there isn't someone to do that kind of tech support, you're pulling, you know, Chris Kaiser, the director, to come in and troubleshoot my computer, when he shouldn't be doing that, really.
Right.
So this is kind of to free up some of that time to, to focus on those kind of projects better.
And we're on a, sorry, go on.
Do they support the police and fire?
Yeah.
I'm not questioning it, I'm understanding it.
No, no, it's fine, no, it's just a question, I mean, you should ask the question, I just think people need to know that they support more than just Town Hall.
That's good to know.
And they back up the Board of Ed with, you know, backhaul support and things like that, so it's, it's really their kind of like the full-town, you know, the support, and there are three of them, and they are definitely stretched.
And we have a virtual environment, our environment is virtual, where most other towns are not that level.
Yeah.
So there's an extra level of security and, and support that that needs, and that's, you know, the department has gotten accolade, accolade, I shouldn't say the word, from, who was it that came in? One of the federal government defense ones came in to look at us a year or so, and was very impressed with the fact that we had the environment we had in place, so that's a higher level than most other municipalities that we have, so it takes a lot more support.
And troubleshooting also, because you run into a lot of issues with people who don't support those virtual environments, so there's a lot of workarounds.
I hear you, thank you.
All right, on to the town clerk, so the town clerk and the voters of Registar after this. So the town clerk and the voters of registrar after this, registrar voters, sorry, see increases due to the presidential election. So a lot of their line items are going to be tied to that. So, full-time salary, this one is a 7.3% increase. This is just due to the town clerk salary position getting an increase last year. Salaries part-time, part-time election and salary overtime are increases of 2,000, about 3,000 and 3,000. These are just plain related to the elections that are upcoming. The same goes for postage and office supplies, supplies office, 2,000 and 3,000, again, election related. And outside contract service, this is up $1,000. This is a price increase of the COT software that the tax, that the town clerk uses, is expected to increase. And obviously, there's a presidential election, early voting is taking place. And there's six districts now instead of three. So kind of all of these, a perfect storm of, of an increase of 10% about for their budget. Any questions on the town clerk?
I do. Are we upgrading any of the boxes?
The machines?
The machines.
I don't think, I don't think they're being upgraded now. I think they are soon to be upgraded. I, I know the registrar talked of training that would have to take place in the upcoming years, but I don't think.
Not for this November or this year?
I don't think so. I can check on that, though. So onto the registrar, registrar is up 18 and a half percent. Again, the same three reasons, the election, early voting in six districts, part-time salary, office and part-time elections are up 10,000 and 3,000. Training is down 2,100. This is just adjusted to reflect the historical trends. And future training would, will be needed, of course, on the new equipment. Elections personnel and support are up 18,000 and 2,600, as well as canvassing, postage, supplies and office. Altogether about 2,200 in increase. These are really, obviously, for that department, all just election related. So, you know, as, as this year goes on, that's just what's necessary. Any questions?
Yeah, why, why don't we have elections personnel included in part-time salaries?
So they're different. The part-time election is different, is different from the part-time salary, is different from the election personnel. They're, they all kind of cover different groups of people. Some, some are poll workers, some are people that come into the office as support. And some may be related to canvassing, I can look at that. But I know they're kind of cover very different things.
And the rates are different, so they segregate them out based on poll workers to part-time workers. So we just keep it as a transparency from separating.
And part-time salary, office and stuff like that, that presumably is something that happens every year. Whereas part-time elections personnel is just once every four years or less frequently.
Yeah, and we have the increase and, and it's a different, different level setup for salaries.
And are those, those rates presumably set by the state, like that poll worker?
I believe it's federal government that sets that one.
Okay, sorry.
It's a, it's a governmental agency that sets it.
Any other questions on these? Okay, onto the building department. So, this one and the next one, building department and land use department, they were combined into the land use department and have now, now been separated out into the building department and land use department. So this is the only case where you'll see the proposed budget percentage increase based off of the revised budget and not based off of the previous approved budget. So this has an increase of 2.9% over last year's revised budget. Contract services are down 4,200. This is from pulling out their share of kind of the open gov and putting it into the IT department. And professional services is increasing for two reasons, about 4,200. To have an electrical inspector to handle the new complexity in some of the newer systems, like for EV chargers that we have around town, for CHP units and for solar. This is to have someone kind of on staff, not on staff, sorry, but on call almost at all times. And they're anticipated, they have some affordable housing transcription that they'll need. So that's into this professional services line. Any questions on the building department? Okay, onto land use. You can kind of see this is now a newly created one. This is down nine-ish percent from last year, nine and a quarter. Salaries OT is up 2,000. Now, this represents two hours per eligible FTE per week essentially. And this is used mostly for transcribing in-house. Professional services is down 73 and a half thousand. The POCD is dropping off, they had done that last year. What's left is 15,000 in anticipated transcriptions and 50,000 in potential zoning regulation updates and implementing a plan based on the POCD results.
Can you just, if you know, explain what a transcription is? Like what is the affordable housing transcript that needs to be done? What is the, what are the, like what does that, is it literally typing, like, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, it's typing time, okay. Fair.
It's very literal.
Right, moving on.
Any questions on land use? Okay, we're grouping a couple together here. Health, pension and OPEB and insurance liability. So for the contribution to town benefits fund is up three and a third percent. This is just basically based on our contract with, with our broker. We're using some OPEB funds to bring down how much we actually have to contribute to our health benefits fund by utilizing the OPEB trust for kind of its purpose, which is to pay for retirees' healthcare plans.
So a portion of the six, six million and change reflects retiree benefits?
It does, yeah.
Well, and that's why you're able to, those are the ones you're able to offset.
Yeah, we, we pay everything out of the, this contribution. But the past two years, our ADAC, the employer contribution is, has been less than what the claims are. So there's that delta of, we're actually paying more in the claim from here. So we have what we can use up to that delta to put claims against it, so it lowers this contribution rate. So we're, we took off about 300,000. Because we have, because the, the fund is starting to do so, the trust is starting to do so well, we're putting about 150 this year, which we budgeted. And next year, we're planning that we have 300 that we can take from the retirees and put it over.
And that was the intended use, right?
That's the intended use and we didn't want to.
Really exciting to hear, I mean, we should all do a little, like, yes, like that's.
Right, so we're starting to see that flip of the ADAC going away. The ADAC went away two years now. And now that the claims are higher than what we're, than we're putting in, we have now technically a savings, we can start using the trust without liquidating assets to pay for those claims.
Fantastic.
The next line down is the 401A. These are 401A contributions to the board of ed. And this is a 7.4%. This is a number given to us by the board of ed. Wellness is up 2,500. This is kind of used by all departments. We get, I think it's up to 20 or 30 dollars a month that an employee can have reimbursed for wellness expenses, gym memberships and so on. And so that's being raised because utilization is up, which is a good thing. Our town pension contribution, that is, that is at 505,000. The percentage is, you know, 143 percentage up. But the historical trend is usually about 1.5 million. We dropped it very low last year and up again this year. This is just based on the previous Hooker and Holcomb report. Workers' compensation is up 2.3% from FY '24 budget. Any questions on these three departments?
Tom? Forgive my newness to all of this, but could you just give me a little more explanation why a pension contribution goes from a million and a half down to 200,000, up to 500,000? Why that's normal or expected or just fine?
We changed some assumptions. So the mortality rate changed. And we also did a asset allocation study that in doing that and changing the discount rate, the liability came down, which changed the ADAC. So we saw a significant difference last year with the change of all that. And now we're seeing the liability because of the growth and, you know, it's not a closed plan. So as we have more members that are eligible to go on to the, the part that's open, we see that liability. And we do use smoothing. So although you might see, you know, some gains, we were up to, what is it, 171, I think? Two years ago, we were down at about 150,000. It has grown. We, I mean, so we've had some losses and gains that gets smoothed. So you don't get the full benefit of those increases. So the liability is just outpacing that smoothing right now. But we were able to reset it with all the different assumption changes.
What percentage level are we funded? Are we 100% funded, using these new assumptions?
110.
How do you feel about that?
Good.
Well, the question is, at what point do you say, gosh, I'm 110% funded, maybe less, I should have a lower contribution?
Well, that question comes up a lot. It's, and we talked to the, the actuarials on this because of the fact of the smoothing and the long-term liability. That liability of having members in it, that keeps growing, one, the cost of healthcare and the assumptions with that. So we will always have some sort of an ADAC right now until we can get into that higher percentage. Because, you know, you would just think naturally, we're 100% funded, why do we have an ADAC? But it's the long-term liability and the smoothing that we have, they have to take that into consideration.
What is ADAC?
Sorry, the actuary determined employer contribution. So it's what we're required every year to give to the pension plan.
Yeah, so you mentioned earlier that the liability keeps growing. But my, my assumption is that since we're 110% funded, that's part of the reason this contribution is, is so reasonable.
Well, you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have salary level increases.
Yep.
Increases in your cost of medical care and newer staff coming in. So that, I'm not an actuary, all those contributions together are what makes that liability to go out further.
Oh, it goes out further, sure. But, but does it grow at an absolute level each year? And, and I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I might need to take this offline and get a, get a class on it or something. If it grows and it's getting bigger and it's going out farther, why is our contribution getting smaller and smaller?
It, it would if the asset level goes up. So we had, one, two, three years ago, we hit 180 million at that point. And the assumptions all changed. That's why the ADAC went from, I think it was 1.7 to 1 million and then dropped again because the, the, the growth of the, of the trust itself, the change in the assumptions and the discount rate. So we got to a stable level where now it's going back up because of those changes we made. Now that, that liability is still growing. I don't know if, so as now we're up to 170, when we go to do it in July, we should see hopefully a different funding level based on what they're doing between the smoothing, the cost of all the salaries and, and medicals and the, the age of the people in the plan.
Okay.
Does that cover it or not?
There's a lot that goes into it and, and it's a lot of assumptions, a lot, a lot of actuarial work.
There's, there's number, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure.
We do, that's not us, oh, gosh, no.
Completely understand.
Actuary that is telling us what we need to do. And the board of finances had the same question.
Yeah.
But they won't let us reduce the contribution.
No, it's, it's fine. 207, 505 is better than a million and a half.
Outside actuary, I think that's extremely smart. And I think that to have that person or people to guiding us, I, I think that, you know, we're on the better half of this. We could be on the other side of it and say, hey, why didn't we do this? But I think using third parties to help guide and, and leverage, like the outstanding efforts that everyone's putting in. Mike, that third parties to, to utilize to help guide us going to go forward would be.
Big proponent of that, absolutely.
Yeah, and I can get a summary snapshot from the, the expert that I can send out to the council to say, this is kind of why it is, the way it is.
I think it's very smart to see that.
We shouldn't expect to see that 207, 505 stay down around 505 and 207, it's gonna fluctuate.
It is gonna fluctuate, but hopefully not too much because of, we have the smoothing factor in there that tries to offset it.
And we're 110% funded.
Yeah.
Could you repeat what ADAC stands for, actuary determined?
Employer contribution.
We do have a role in setting assumptions, though. I mean, we're part of that discussion. And the number results from the assumptions.
Exactly, yeah. The discount rate, we usually do take the mortality rates when they suggest them, the, the actuarial company.
Any other questions on these?
No, Josh, just hit your top lines on these. We have, it's quite a bit to go, so I need you to just.
I got you. Parking is up one and a half percent, salaries OT is down 5,000. I'll skip the reasonings when they're good. Outside contract services is down 5,000. So this is actually an expense that coincides with how many parking tickets we give. And as we give less tickets, this expense goes down as well. You'll see an offsetting on the revenue side. Property service, sorry, property service contract is down 100%. We're no longer leasing the telephone lot for business permits, so that's out. Supplies signs, that is literal signs, parking signs, that's being transferred over to the DPW budget because it gets used by the DPW budget anyway. Banking and transaction fees, we're actually updating how this is being accounted for. We're not netting it against the revenue. We're having the proper expense in here and the proper revenue in here. So you'll see a corresponding increase. But this is really a one-time correction in how we're doing the proper accounting for it. Any questions on parking? Okay, onto debt service contingency and transfers, transfers out. So debt service is a 2.8% increase after bonding this month and offsetting, there will be an offsetting on the revenue side for bond premium that we're transferring in. Salary contingency is at 375,000. That's, that includes non-union COLA, DPW steps and COLA since they're under union contract negotiations and 261 budgeted salary days instead of 260 days, that one extra day, we have to build it into the budget. Transfers to tax-supported capital, that number started at 1.9 million. We kind of really have an average of about 1.7 to 1.9 million. That number right now is down to 380,000. This is utilizing older bond premium, some tax-related capital fund balance, extra duty fund balance and kind of bonding for some, not smaller projects that, that they last for 10 years and are, are bondable. And we're kind of grouping them together as a bondable unit and moving them over.
Let's not slide by debt service too quickly. Are we comfortably within guidelines?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And do these numbers assume that the full capital budget this year is approved?
The capital budget for this year will not affect this year's budget, so.
So none, none of the debt service hits in this, in this fiscal year?
Right, because we, we bond in arrears. So it'll be what I bond in March of '25 is, will affect '26. So what I bonded just this past month is what's gonna affect '25's budget and it's incorporated in here.
But you'd have some things that are rolling off, correct? Some projects on the capital side. That need to off-bond.
Yes, oh, yeah, we, we just bonded for 27 million.
Okay.
So that's in this, in this budget.
In this budget.
Yeah.
Okay, onto the revenue side of things. So on the finance side, we're up 62%. This is mainly driven by interest on investments. That is an increase to 2 million, which is an increase of 1.1 million. The treasurer did about three different forecasting methodologies and averaged them into the 2 million prediction that he has now. Rental of property finance is down 380,000 since there's no anticipated board of education rent from 220 Elm. State grants, we've now included the TAR grant, town aid road. So that's 330,000. That used to be offset in the bonded capital against, I think, pavement preservation or one of the paving sites. But we're incorporating that into the general fund, which is gonna be used obviously for town aid road eligible.
How much is that?
332,000. Onto tax assessor and collector. The tax assessor, oh, sorry, I guess I, I don't really have a slide on that. Tax assessor is, has a state property rebate, that's flat, that's, that just goes off the governor's budget. Tax collector, that's obviously a plug number that we use to balance the budget. The tax collection is current and we keep liens fees and prior years flat at 302,500. So any questions on those two? Okay. Town clerk, this is down three percent. She is keeping conveyance fees flat at 1.5 million. There's a couple drops in recording fees. MERS town GF fees down 28,000 and copier revenue down 15,000. And these are just bringing them in line with 23 actuals and 24 projections. Any questions on these? Okay, building and land use, pretty much flat. The two departments have been separated out and their building permits and zoning permits and so on, separated between the two departments. And so it's pretty much flat between them. Parking, so. Parking, so what's the easiest thing to do? Parking permits is truly flat, but the way we're accounting for it now between the general fund and the parking fund, we're, we're now more correctly accounting for it. Essentially, at the end of the year, the general fund transfers over a pers, a percentage of the parking permits revenue into the parking fund. This, for, for example, last year, or this year rather, is 500,000 and we're gonna be transferring over 100,000. Truthfully, the budget for this year should be 400,000 with the 100,000 in addition in the parking fund to a combined total of 500,000. So we're now accounting for that correctly with 400 and 100. So when we're doing our kind of year-to-date budget reports, now you'll see that it's truly in line with what we're budgeting for it when that's taken into account. Also, tickets are down. You know, there's a bigger focus on educating the public and where to park rather than ticketing, ticketing them, so that's good. Meters are up, reflecting kind of an upward trend in revenue that people are kind of coming back to park. And they're coming back and utilizing the boxcar, which is up 30,000 that we're, have budgeted. This is just reflecting the popularity versus day passes at Towne Mitchell. Any questions on parking revenue? Okay. Insurance liability and miscellaneous. Insurance liability, member equity drop-off. Kirma let us know that they're, that's our insurance liability company, that they won't be contributing or giving back any money for member equity next year due to, due to a large claim on their side. So we don't anticipate getting anything from them. And operating transfers in is comprised of three things. The smallest being the dog fund is being closed and we're transferring in 60,000 from there. Bond premium is being transferred in to offset debt service interest. That's gonna be 1.96 million. And the remainder of the ARPA grants are being transferred in at 747,000. Any questions on those or any other revenue? General government doesn't really have many capital projects, but it does have IT, which has its three annual recurring ones, which are hardware-software, WAN hardware-software, and cybersecurity mitigation through Darktrace. That's 90,000, 80,000, 55,000. It also has parking. Parking's coming out with, they're looking into a new permitting and ticketing software. Their software doesn't really fulfill, fulfill the needs in terms of being able to basically drive past and know if a car is properly permitted and be able to kind of integrate with systems well. So they're, have 62,000 in there, looking to kind of upgrade those.
If these are recurring IT expenses, why are they under capital and not under operating? Sorry.
That's, yeah, so because they're projects, they're projects that they do. So, and they'd spend them over a couple of years with some of them, with the implementation of it. So we've just finished some of the 23, they're in, and that's why they need another body because they've got these projects they need to put into place for all these different things. So, and it's over 50, so it doesn't go into tax-supported capital. But he, they're, they're upgrading, as Josh said, right now, they're upgrading our whole infrastructure right now. That will be new equipment, new, the new technology itself, the servers they're putting in. This all comes into this.
Okay, thank you.
But that's a good point. I understand it's recurring like over five years or for the next five years, but it says recurring annually, which sounds like it's indefinite, that's what I.
He doesn't, he doesn't ask for it all at one, so his projects are set over. So instead of asking for 500,000 now.
Yeah.
And then spreading it over, he's asking it in portions as he goes, as he needs it.
For particular projects.
For particular projects with, he might look at finance and go through all our stuff. And then he might go through, the next year he'll go through another one. And he'll have the software-related, the server-related, and all the equipment that he's doing.
Okay. Okay, yeah, no, I'm sorry, that's clear.
And these are, these are assets that we would capitalize. So these are assets that would go on for five years.
And i, if it's in the, if it's in the operating budget, you know, once it hits June 30th, that money's dead.
Dead. He does, he doesn't have it anymore and he'd have to keep coming back for it again.
They didn't get their delivery in of the servers or whatever. And that would go into the next year's budget and it, you know, that year's budget would be out. Any questions in general?
Anybody?
I'm sorry, I do have a quick question. I know you don't like it, but. So, and as a general government, it's, and 30, 30,000. I guess my question is, are we looking at, and I know that Deanna just started and all that, but are we looking at like better ways of working only because, you know, every year there are better ways of either, you know, automating things or better ways, you know, that maybe you don't need as many bodies or there's some things that we were doing before and maybe we shouldn't be doing. And so I guess I'm just wondering, you know, does, is, is it just gonna keep going up, which that could be the answer? Or are, are we looking at ways of doing things more efficiently and differently in order to, you know?
I mean, there's always a focus on, on streamlining processes.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, you know, whether it's working with, you know, OpenGov or the parking software.
That's a great example.
Or COT, trying to get them to, you know, function well in the ecosystem that the town uses through Munis or just, you know, how they deliver, you know, what they put out, what they export to finance, you know, how, how departments do budget transfers and just, I think there's kind of always an eye on trying to do things efficiently, like.
Well, Josh has implemented the budget transfers online. Before, people had to physically come with a piece of paper over to finance to drop off. So we've eliminated, like, we're going through steps. Finance is a big one for us on stuff. We enter in a lot of, on our entries manually. And COT is one of them from the town clerk. We found out that's something that could be bridged in, we're working on that. Myrec is a bridge in. OpenGov is a bridge in that we're current, just currently working on the cash side. So that's where, when Josh had said about, say, the overtime for finance, I don't really want another body, but right now I have the need of all this stuff that we're changing to simplify it, that hopefully I don't need the overtime and I don't need the body. So that's just one area. So each department, finance affects a lot of those departments because of the work that they put out that affect us. So Park and Recs made a big difference for Park and Recs with their signup and the, the residents seemed very happy with that software. OpenGov seems to be taking off with the contractors and everything and, and people. They're loving that service. And as Jen, I, I'm not sure if Jen had mentioned it, we, we were concerned about people aren't gonna put it on a credit card with the fee. Well, that's the highest use. So they are using their credit card. They can use an E-check, they can use other methods, but credit card's the highest. That for us has become a significant change of being able to match it to the bank statement, which was very difficult before. So we see a lot of the changes and that's ongoing. There's a lot to do, but we're, we're going through it.
Well, it sounds like you're doing that in a number of departments. I guess I'm just curious if there's a process, like every year we go through and we look and see how we can do things better.
We are.
That's what I'm kind of curious about.
Oh, yeah.
So it sounds like you're doing that in all of these departments?
Well, Josh and I meet every two weeks and we go through the things that we know we can change that can have immediate effects. And then once we get that done, then we're moving out to the other departments to say, what else can we do from that point on?
And the parking department, just, you know, the, the whole system that they're.
That's what I saw too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's to kind of make Stacy's job easier so she's not having to manually input a lot of things and it's coming with a system that she can, you know, do some, you know, evaluation on.
And I think that's always important. I sometimes think a focus on like the number of people or reducing that is, can, you know, can be not misguided, but, you know, we did add a full-time employee, we added Greg Riley to write grants, and look how productive that has been for us. I mean, how much, is there any ballpark of how much grant money we've gotten since?
Well.
We got 2 million.
We get 2 million?
Right. I mean, as far as.
We haven't seen it yet, but.
But it far exceeds what his salary is. So it's, that's why sometimes there's like that nuance where, you know, I, I get that urge to sort of look at the number of bodies and say, is this all necessary? But that's, that's just a, an example of where it's been super accretive and, and really helpful. So I, I take your point.
Yeah.
Sometimes automation, though, can't account for everything and skill and things like that.
And I'm not saying a certain number, I'm just saying, are we looking at that?
We do.
Because you can easily add or not realize that we could do things better or that we're doing things we should no longer be doing. That's all.
Yeah, we definitely are.
Thank you.
One other non-general government change is we have 30,000 in there for the Utilities Commission for a study that is now being done in FY '24. So we're gonna be cutting that out, 30,000 from the budget that you have in front of you in FY '25.
And that's in the first selectment budget?
It's on its own. It's on its own.
Oh, it's on July?
Yeah, it's its own department.
We're gonna take, take care of it in this year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Dankeschön, Herr Kaufman, fürs Schatzes. Means, thank you, Mr. Kaufman, we appreciate it. Very good. All right. Moving on to agenda item number five, public hearing. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 town budget. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address and comments will be limited to two to three minutes subject to the total number of speakers. Do we have any speakers? Okay. Moving on to agenda item number six, overall budget update and review. Further review, follow-up and discussion by town council if necessary. So at this point of the proceeding, we can have a general discussion about the budget. If anyone has any just overall comments, questions, concerns. We will be meeting again April 2nd for the reading of the budget and the final votes. So we can certainly have that discussion, a fuller discussion on that evening as well. So it's the pleasure of everybody up here. You tell me how you wanna, want to proceed. Do you wanna have any further general comments or discussion right now? Do you wanna just consider things and have a chat on April 2nd on Tuesday before we move forward and do the reading and vote? Is that what everybody's preference would be? Going once, going twice?
Does anybody have any comments?
Feel free to discuss. I mean, I mean, I know personally I'll probably have some of the general comments on, on April 2nd, but it's up to what everybody wants to do, it's on the agenda if anyone wants to have any discussion.
If there's a, if somebody has in mind a proposed change to the budget, early warning would be useful so that we can debate it and contemplate.
Sure.
So I'd love to hear about those tonight if there are any.
Yeah, if there's any actual proposal saying, hey, I wanna move X from whatever department, if anyone has that type of a, an idea or proposal right now, we should absolutely throw that out and understand that's something that's out there. Jennifer, please.
Can I just ask or open up, just, it seemed like from, from the last meeting, maybe two meetings ago, that, that the one issue that was sort of surprising or hanging in the air was the suggestion of sending something back to the Board of Finance. Is that something we should find out where, where that's going or is, is that not? That's, that's. So that's, that's separate?
So capo field you're talking about. And it's, it's my, it's my understanding, and, and anyone, you're all free to speak your own mind. It's my understanding that we will not be sending that back to the Board of Finance. I think there's enough support to keep the 2 million request in. But if, unless I'm wrong, everyone has free to speak their own mind, but at least that's my general understanding.
Just to be clear, you can't send each individual line item back?
Correct.
Nope.
So, so we know that, that it was, it was suggested to, to us that there was some kind of a.
What's academic, anyway?
No, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I just meant from, from my perspective, at the end of that meeting, I, 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 I thought it was left. There was some confusion as to how we all felt together, so now it's clarified.
Yeah, thank you for raising that, Jennifer, I really appreciate that. Yeah, so again, it's, it's, as my understanding that, that there's no appetite to even signal that the $2 million should be, uh, $2 million should be reduced from, from the budget. Am I correct? Okay. Yes, Christina, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I still have some questions regarding the library. And unfortunately, unlike other departments, we don't meet with them or go over the nitty-gritty of the items in the budget. So I would like to have them back or at least to set up a meeting to discuss some of the open issues.
We certainly can have them come on April 2nd to answer any further questions. I think that would be appropriate if there's questions to be asked.
Okay.
Yeah, again, thank you, Jennifer, for that. So other than that, it doesn't appear we have any need to, at least right now, address anything else with the budget or other general comments. Hillary?
I was just gonna ask Christina if she could elaborate a little bit more so we can all think about, too, what your, what the suggestion is.
Yeah, there are questions regarding the revenues of the library. There, there are, there is information online that has been filed with the IRS or with Open, not OpenGov, with ProPolitica, I think it is, is one of the sites that lists all of the nonprofits' revenues and expenses and their foundations, whatever they have set aside. And the numbers just don't jive. And I just wanna better understand how they're calculating it in terms of their income, their revenue, their expenses.
Is there any way you can send us a link to that?
Yeah, I can.
From Publica is the website she's referring to.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, but that's a great idea. Send the link along and then we can have library representative come in and answer any further questions.
Okay.
But again, so other than the capo field, so I'm not seeing any appetite for any reduction to the budget as we sit here tonight, is that correct?
Well, I mean, we did have a discussion about headcount, new headcount. And mostly probably the Board of Ed. So I'm just curious what everyone else thinks as far as bringing on, you know, upping the headcount. Is that, like, when does it stop? You know, do we, do we, is there a way to?
I have, I have a similar, similar concern. I, 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 I'm not quite, I guess, I hate the word satisfied, right? That's not really, it's, I, I feel like I, I'm not convinced maybe that we need all those extra bodies. Not that, not that we couldn't use them and that we, that we create, but I'm not sure if that's something that is in need right now.
But we can't guarantee, if we were to cut.
I know.
They could, there's no guarantee that the headcount would be.
That's always, that's always the situation.
We would assume that the, you know, that the B E would do the, you know, the right thing, right? But.
Well, that depends on your perspective, if, if that's the right thing to do.
Well, that's ours, that, that might be our perspective.
I agree.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think also, but it's not, it's not just unique to the Board of Ed. I think just generally speaking, and I say this over and over again.
The town as well.
It's, it's on both sides. Our, more than the majority of our budgets are locked up in, in fixed labor costs. So if we're really ever going to achieve really true quote-unquote savings, to me, it's, it has to be either achieved at the bargaining table, when Dr. Letzti did a great job explaining how very difficult that is. And it's not unique to the Board of Ed, it's to all the departments, the police, fire, the town. It's, it will be headcount. And, you know, and just theoretically and generally speaking, even in the private sector, it's, you know, telling any particular department or function, listen, you know, we're going to, you're not getting everything you want. In fact, we're gonna ask you to take less. And if it means a headcount reduction, fine, but you better make sure standards stay the exact same. And if you can't get it, I'm saying, again, generally speaking. And if you can't maintain the, the, the level of performance at a reduced dollar amount, then maybe we, you know, need to look for different leadership. Again, I'm not saying that, it's not for the town, I'm saying that's a general kind of, you know, Rich Townsend used to say it all the time on town council and, and, and so did Sven and a lot of others, that that's really where you're going to achieve savings. And, and what we hear from the department heads is we, this headcount is tight. If we, we drop this headcount, we will see some type of material reduction potentially in, in the, in the performance. So again, not unique to the Board of Ed, just across the board. So, you know, how do we tell, you know, we as a town council to say, Board of Ed or police or fire, you need to waylay, you know, 10 people. You know, you figure out where it is and you better not have any reduction in service. And that's where I think in the seven seasons I've sat on the budgets, that's kind of where I see the nexus of the, the, the core issue of our town budget. Because we're always kind of tinkering at, at the margin.
Oh, Mike, I, I don't think we're looking at headcount reduction, I don't think it should be a negative thing. I think we're just looking for accountability and like, you know, clarity and transparency as to, to why we need. And maybe it's an education process for us to, to understand why, why we need to increase certain things. And I don't think it's a questioning or anything negative, like, hey, you need to cut X. And it's, again, it's not related to the Board of Ed, it's, it's just across everything. It's just understanding, not coming up here as like, here, here it is. And like, if you don't do this, then the town's gonna plummet. It's like, okay, you know, like, I, I think there, there can be some social understandings of how do we get here? And here's where we're gonna go forward. And I think it's just clarity. I, I think it's understanding how we landed here and what are we gonna go with next steps rather than just getting through, getting through the budget season, understanding that this is where we are today. And then here's the idea on a path forward going, you know. So I, I think that any that, type of that information would be very useful. And understanding, you know, getting information prior, and you guys do a fantastic, fantastic job doing that. I think then we, you know, the, a couple rounds of questions and comments, I think it just like gave a lot of clarity. And it was like, rather than just like shotgunning a two-hour session up here in a, in a bullfight, it was like, hey, no, this is what, this is where we're going, this is where we're going. It was like, makes total sense. And now like, I'm fully on board. So I, I think the, the, the holding ourselves to the process that it's been developing has been, been really exciting. So I, I'm happy to be a part of it and, and I think everyone's done an excellent job providing clarity, right? So like questions and answers and questions and answers rather than, you know, the Gatling gun like of 37 questions a minute. Like, I don't think that's productive. And listen, you've done in the past and you've done an excellent job. I, I think that we've, we've kind of graduated to a, you know, a more formal and, and better process. And I think that any, any type of feedback would, would be welcomed because I think it's, there's a lot of comfort up here with those answers. And it's like, oh, okay, didn't see it from that angle or didn't know it or, or great, great comment. that angle or didn't know it or, or great, great comment. So.
So I just want to add, because as a, as a new person, I definitely felt in terms of clarity and transparency, I mean, it just couldn't have been better and I learned so much. And so I, I think just following up and on what Maria was saying is that I just want to feel at the end of this process, especially in a reval year, it's just that, I, I always think of like the analogy honestly in Italian, McCain, and it's like, there are so many projects I have going on, you know, right now and, you know, John and I, we have this like budget and, you know, what, what can we get done or, you know, are we going to use the cedarwood or the locust? What, you know, like, what, what can we do to try to just, especially in this environment if there were some places? And so it, it does feel like that one particular area of a year of, you know, I don't know if it was like 10 or 15 with the people coming off of the grant, if there was any room in there to just, you know, help, show, show.
I think there were only four coming off of the grant.
I'm sorry?
I think there were only four coming off of.
Okay, three, three, I couldn't remember that number.
Three or four. Is that right, Brian?
So anyways, I just want to state, it was not, it wasn't a question, like clarity, transparency, everything, just but a one more sort of go around. A hundred percent, yeah, yeah. No, I agree. And I, of course, we can't say by line item, but that's how we understand the budget, right? By line item, we understand what goes into the budget. So that's when you start going, huh, I wonder if we thought about, you know, this. And so like, again, I'm not going to, I would never say this is what should happen or this is how much, how much headcount I think you need. I could never say that. But in thinking about it, like, okay, there are three people at, you know, at 68,000, just say, and it's hard to keep that person, those people in place because it's such a low amount of money, like, would you consider two, but that are like more experienced, that you'd pay more? I'm just giving that as an example. But I, I just, I'm not feeling completely comfortable, I guess, thinking that we need, we need, definitely need all of those, all that headcount, and I would like to feel more comfortable.
Brian's here.
In general.
Yeah.
I know, I'm looking at him, I'm looking at him.
Yeah, so I mean, if, if you're skeptical about, and I don't think it helps to say, I'd rather the number be 441 instead of 446.
I agree.
You know, I, I think it's very helpful to say, here's a specific thing you're asking for, and I'm not convinced it's necessary to provide the services that the town expects. So if you, if you can specify a role.
Yeah, but that's when we get in the, you can't.
Yeah, by line item, by line item.
It's still important to have the discussion.
I mean, here's, here's what I think.
I feel a little hamstrung as well.
I see, I kind of see the opposite. I feel like maybe Brian can do some magic and, and cut things down a little bit more and then everyone would feel that we, I mean, the thing about headcount is it's forever.
Yeah.
But maybe we can counterbalance it with trimming the budget a little bit more and coming back with a number that's a little bit less than what's being asked and we shrink the percent increase a little bit, maybe that would help us feel better.
How much, how much do you think though? But how much, what would you suggest cutting that's going to make an appreciable difference? I mean, my, without cutting any services. So my feeling is that this is an incredibly tight budget. I would not substitute my judgment for that of our administration, which is highly capable. And, 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 yeah, micromanaging a little bit, like, who, who is to say that the optimal headcount in our schools was optimal when it was 10 less? This could be the optimal amount. It has never, ever, and Maria, you should know this better than anyone, I'm, I'm sure I'm speaking to the converted here, it has never, ever been harder to teach and administer our schools than it is right now. It's, it's, it's so much harder than it was pre-pandemic. It's, I can't imagine all of the academic behavioral supports, family supports, you've got parents, for better or for worse, more involved than ever before, and that's something that teachers and administrators need to manage too. I don't think this is a fatty budget. I think it is, maybe, and maybe it's naive or maybe I'm trusting, but I, I don't see, again, how trimming around the edges isn't something more optical to say, look, we've done, we've done something here. I mean, and we suggest you cut people that he has deemed essential. I mean, by the time it gets to us, right?
I mean, I, if I had to say one position, I think I would say the coach, because I feel like it's not close enough to the students.
The assistant athletic director, is that? No, oh, sorry.
And the assistant athletic director. I just feel like there are a lot of supports for students and that's just one step removed from students, and to me, that would make sense.
I appreciate that candor because I think that that's more helpful than just kind of saying.
Well, we're always in that, you know, you know.
But I think, but no, I appreciate that specificity because otherwise.
I think we felt like we couldn't do that because then it was feel, it felt like really line item, but I could, I could throw out some stuff now too. I mean, I just, honestly, it felt like don't, you can't attack line items, but then it's, you have to be more specific of what you have a question. So I, I appreciate that.
I just don't understand what we, we would expect him to do if there wasn't some direction from those who are advocating cutting.
I'm saying that's helpful.
Understanding he can cut anywhere.
You know, no, that's helpful, that's helpful. And so one of, and one of the things that I just thought of, like, so I, I understand, again, I'm, I, it's more clarity, it's more understanding, and I see your point, like, I, I get it. And I do think about every, every new headcount, that's permanent, right? That's, that's on the books for a while. It's hard, you know, that's pension, that's 401, that's.
Assuming we hire somebody, that they can get someone.
Right.
Right. It's not an automatic add. Like if they can't find a social worker, that doesn't get added to the year, it's just.
Right, but if we think we need it, that's something we hope, you would hope we would get.
Of course, of course, I'm just saying it's not automatic.
Yeah, so like one of the things, and I know this is very controversial because, and I am, I'm very, very obviously pro-mental health. I, you know, think it's important and I also think, you know, there's this loneliness epidemic and there's, you know, it's, it's, it's a terrible, I think, you know, landscape out there for, for teens and stuff. So I think mental health is really important. But then I think, okay, it took us so, you know, it took a long time to get someone to fill a $68,000 job because that's a really low amount for, you know, it's entry level and it, it's hard to even get that person and sometimes it's hard to, to maintain, like to, to avoid turnover. So would it make sense, and I said this before, instead of having three positions, do you have two positions of more experienced folks that you can keep on the payroll that will not turn over, that can maybe do a better job with mental health that, instead of three, you know, lower paid jobs? Again, that's just, it's just an example of something that, I don't know, have we thought about that? Is that, it, it may not even be much money in terms of a difference, but it could be a more effective way of looking at that problem. So again, that was one.
You're talking about the social worker?
Yeah.
So I think with the social worker.
Or the counselor, the social counselor.
The benefits add up to a lot more than to 68,000. So for a social worker, get a job for that salary and then get the health benefits and the other benefits that come with being an employee of New Canaan Public Schools, it's quite an attractive job. So I don't think hiring, and my understanding is they already have a social worker that's at Saks that's going to roll over, but the, the teen talk counselor was 96,000. That included their salary about 68 plus all benefits.
Right.
So it's really almost a $100,000 job. So it's actually quite an attractive offer.
But there were other, there were other counselor positions too, wasn't there? More than just, that was just the guidance counselor, there wasn't another mental health counselor? So it was just two, it's just two positions that we're talking about.
Well, they added back a social worker and added a guidance counselor.
Let's get clarity on that. How, how, how about that? Thank you.
Well, the social worker was rolling off the grant, right? And so now we're adding that.
And then they're bringing them back in.
And then the guidance counselor was added by.
That's a new position.
Right, for college counseling.
Yeah, exactly.
Hi.
Hi.
The, so specifically, correct, the position for the social worker at Saks is currently filled with someone, she's in her second year now. We anticipate that person would continue. The cost that we built in the budget is the actual salary cost. Correct. The, so when we hire folks, we look at their years of experience, we look at, you know, what they're going to bring in. It's all, they're part of the union, part of the contract. So to say, sort of go from three to two, pay them more, I, first of all, with the union and the way the contract works, it's not, not an option. Secondly, I think that would be less preferable to what we have. Because when we bring folks in, we do an awful lot of training, working with them, developing them and bringing, building their skill set. So they are, they're highly trained when they get here and they get, they're more trained along the way, which is why, again, we, we think the, the model of having it in-house and having somebody who works for us is preferable to outsourcing at the middle school because of, you know, lots of things that we've already talked about. On the kids in crisis, which again is a highly successful program at the high school, we want to continue, that 96 goes to kids in crisis and then flows through to the employee at whatever level. I don't know what they pay them exactly. But when you're talking about people being with us over time or recruiting, whatever it is, the position that we're looking to shift out of the grant in the operating budget is currently filled and we have every expectation the person in there is going to stay with us for how, whatever period of time that works out to be. They are difficult positions to hire, for sure. There's a shortage, there's a crisis, there's a lot going on. We have a great team. So part of this, moving this from the grant, which is expiring over to operating, allows us to maintain that team and keep those folks together. In terms of the, the headcount, just, it's 3.4 from grant that's moving over, so 1.0 is that social worker, and then there's another 2.4 positions that are. And then the other positions are those that are new. Now of the new positions, majority are driven by enrollment or legislation, right? We've got the enrollment at Saks, we've got the legislation for the pre-K, we've got legislation for the financial literacy requirement, we have the need for more world languages because of the, the specific ways in which that, those programs are developed. Again, it's not one department, it's five departments because each language is its own certification. For the math coach position, again, this, so just so you know the way the process works, I mean, all this has been very carefully vetted coming to you. There are, we've made those decisions about essential, helpful but not essential, deferred, you know, for a longer period of time. What you're seeing are the things we've deemed essential. And in part, we, these are data-driven decisions, looking at the outcomes based with, with our students in the classrooms. We do have, we have a fair amount of support with our kids. We've always had that hybrid model where our instructional specialists would be working with kids sometimes and with staff at other times. They're no longer able to work with staff. So we've really, because of the intensity of the needs and, you know, what, what our students need us to do for them, right? So there are deficits there, there's other work that we are doing, those, and they will always, these interventions, others will always work with kids first. That's what we do, that's, that's our role. However, what, where, we need to build up that team of coaches so that our teachers can continually develop in the content area around math. We talked before about elementary teachers really, they do specialize, we have some very strong elementary teachers in math. Most are in reading, most are more, more humanities-based. This is something that will help our teachers to help our kids. Ultimately, we hope that we'd see less of the need on the intervention side, that would balance itself out and as these things go. And I just want you to, just know contextually, we are probably, we're, we're not, I wouldn't say late to the game, but we're certainly far from the first to arrive in hiring coaches and bringing them in and really focusing on instructional practice with our staff. So we started last year with, with the classroom coach, we had great success with that model. We're going to replicate that model. I know you see it as a 1.0, but what you're really seeing is it's 0.3 at each of our elementaries and knowing that our elementaries are 500 and up, right? So, you know, over at East, next year, we're anticipating 580 kids, 580 kids. So to have someone who's working on the pedagogy with our teachers in the classroom, specifically around math instruction, is something that we need. We identify that through looking at student performance data, statewide assessments and internal assessments and other things that we have. So that's why it's before you for consideration.
So that's your, that's your success criteria, looking at the, talk about that a little bit. You glossed over it, but I'd love to hear it. So you said we've experienced a lot of success with the classroom coaches and then you mentioned some performance statistics. How do you measure success?
So with our math coach or you mean with the existing classroom coach?
General, whether it's just adding, you know, the classroom coach, you said there was, I said, you said we had a lot of success with that.
We continue to have great success with that. So there are a variety of ways that the classroom coach is sort of inputs into the classroom. And those are individual classes, grade levels, even across all the schools, the professional training, the learning that, that has been occurring. What we see is the, the student generates student outcomes. So with classroom coach, we're really talking about that classroom environment and working hard to ensure that all students are in an environment that is supportive, engaging, that they are positively contributing towards. And then, again, that's a need that was data-driven and identified a year ago in our conversations here. So what we're seeing is a, an advanced sophistication of practice with the teachers who are working with our classroom coach and positive classroom outcomes. And we have a domain that we've developed, it's an indicator that has a whole continuum of practice around coaching, that's part of the teacher evaluation document that we've only just developed just at the very, the beginning of this year. So we use that as an, as a metric around performance that's based on observable outcomes for the, both the coach, that lead through to the outcomes that we see in those classrooms. So it is, we don't give a test, here's a number and then it increases by, by Y and there you go. But we do see that, that increasingly improved practice as a result of the, the professional learning that's embedded in the deck.
Do the teachers perceive that their effectiveness has improved as a result of the coach?
Absolutely. They do and they continue to go back to that coach. So it's a, it's not a one and done by any means, it's a, you know, reciprocal relationship where the coach is working with the teachers, they learn together, they are, they're colleagues. And it's very important to have a coach who's not in an evaluative role, evaluative role. So the difference is, the coach doesn't evaluate the teachers, the coach works with them and around their practice. And then the administrator will, will certainly talk with the coach in his sense, but they're not doing the actual evaluation. So it's through the teacher's evaluation through their administrator that we also have documentation of improvement. And the coach is working as a colleague, as an expert colleague in order to increase and improve that, the teacher's practice. So we've seen that success with the classroom coach. We are confident that we'd see similar success with a math coach, where the classroom coach is around the domain of classroom environment and engagement and student activity and Jill's mentioned before, sort of use of instructional time, right? So, you know, I'm a secondary guy, I was a high school principal, everything else. So I've learned so much from Jill and from everybody that's involved with all this. But just a quick, for instance, again, if you want to really drill down into metrics, we go into some classrooms where the environment isn't what it could be and you, you lose minutes in the orderly move in, say, transitions. Where a transition from the rug to the desk is taking three minutes, it should be taking 30 seconds or less. So diagnosing that, problem solving that, that seems simple, but you multiply that over X number of times, over X number of days, and you start to look at the instructional time lost, and it's a real thing. So right there is something that you can, you can measure and see that you need somebody to come in, spend some time, see what's happening, see what the kids are doing, see what the adults are doing, make some suggestions, work with them and go from the three minutes or so, whatever time it is, down to below 30 seconds in those transitions consistently, that's a huge win for that classroom in the amount of instructional minutes regained for the course of the year. That's only one slice, but that's a quantifiable slice of how these coaches can, can benefit our classrooms.
If I can interpret that to something that I deal with in business, I'm just, I'm just, because it's very interesting, as you talk, I'm understanding this better. To me, it feels like you're, you're, it's quality control and it's also maintaining consistency. So you're getting the same sort of high-quality performance across all the classrooms, which I, I just had a little bit of an aha there, which I think is really interesting and I didn't see it that way actually before.
Okay.
That really kind of helped me, that helps me understand the, the benefit.
Sure, thank you.
May I ask better?
May I ask one question about it?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity. So it resonated with me in the last presentation that you did, when you said that, like, elementary school teachers, that they, they have to be masters of all trades. And so, and that made sense. And then you couple that with the complexity of math, and some of our town council members saying, you know, I have to Google to figure out how. So I'm, I'm just curious, totally, like, and the answer may be an easy no, but is it a situation where maybe in time, a job well done by these math coaches makes their job redundant? Like, because, like, like, do you ever anticipate, like, like, a young elementary school teacher, you know, with a year or two of it, like, is there, is there a point at which, you know, they know how to do that aspect, you know, these higher concepts? Or is that really not the way it works?
Well, it's an interesting question. I think that it's not, it's certainly a possibility. But another possibility is that the work gets deeper and deeper and deeper, because of the nature of learning and practice, and practice will always be evolving, and there'll always be folks that are new and turnover and those things. But, I mean, really, if...
We can get our third graders doing calculus.
Well, no, but it's, we, there are positions like that, right? A coach's job is to put the players on the field and be quiet the whole time, right? Like, that's, let them do, let, teach them so much that they can do everything you need them to do. There are a few positions, like, we have technology integrators. So what's happened over time, and we've had TIs for a good number of years. Initially, they were running around, working with the teachers individually about, how do I go into this program? How do I do that? And doing that sort of low-level work. As teachers' sophistication with technology has evolved, so have the TIs, so that they've, they continue now, we've gone from helping people open up, you know, check their email or whatever, to using a green screen with kids to create award-winning videos, you know? And so the position has evolved as the knowledge of the organization has evolved.
Some multiple benefits.
Say, I'm sorry?
Multiple benefits.
Yeah, I think so. I definitely see that. And again, it's, you know, when we look across our three elementary schools, we're talking about sixteen hundred plus children that are in math classes taught by their elementary teachers. So we're talking about one person to really help us to do quality control, those assured experiences, to work with the teachers, to help us to diagnose learning needs for the staff and everything else. So, you know, you talk about, I understand it, and it's always a question and a conversation in, for boards of ed and municipalities. But I would say, we've taken a pretty deep dive into our staffing from seven, eight years ago. And what we found is that the, that special education has been a significant driver across the board. You know that we've in-sourced and we've actually saved money. When we look against other districts, there are forty-three districts that spend more per pupil than we do. And we've made strategic decisions in sort of how we use our folks. And I'd be glad to, if you wanted a Tuesday or anything else, but you could also look at the Board of Education meeting from a couple times back. There is a presentation that breaks all of this down and looks at those, and I gave you the presentation, but without doing it, but really looks at those specific categories to show, to show that we might have gone down in writing specialists as we've gone up in a math specialist because we saw that need, how we've adjusted. We did add a directive innovation, but that was really repurposing our K eight science coordinator. We eliminated that position in order to build this one. So we've been strategic about how we've done that. And I think that that's to the credit of the entire administration, because it's, so I don't want you to think it's always additive. It's not. You know, these are hard decisions for us to make, and we do it, and we do it as carefully as we can. But the, you know, when we're looking at ten across the board, three point, three and a half of them are already working for us. Most of these are driven by enrollment or legislation. So once you go beyond that, you're really looking at, you're right, it's the classroom coach, and we're looking at the world language point five. And then there's the part-time athletic director position, which, when you look at, one of the challenges of our athletic program is its success. Our seasons never end. Like, our, our players are always in the postseason, they're always continuing on. And we have, we're blessed by having a very involved booster club, all sports booster club, that helps us to fund additional coaches. So we've got a large cadre of coaches here, seventy coaches or so, that are working with our kids over the course of the year. We've one athletic director. We have over seventy percent of our kids who are participating in athletics, seventy percent of our families. And that, to have some, and we're still going to have one athletic director, but to have an assistant who can help with all of the complexity of that role is, is something that, I mean, we're the only district in the, in the region, maybe, perhaps in the FSAC, that only has a one point oh athletic director doing this work.
I just want to acknowledge also, there are plenty of parents, there are also parents that are highly involved in doing the sports to you. Like, I, I, I don't.
Outside of the high school.
Yeah, I don't deny that. We need the, whatever, assistant athletic director, but.
Oh, we're blessed to have a very engaged parent community.
I just want to acknowledge the parents that are really heavily involved and have helped a lot.
Oh, definitely. And that, they still would. We'll still need them. But what we have are, you know, so many adults that work with our kids that we need to, we feel a need to increase our supervision.
Do you think that would be an internal promotion, so to speak, or addition to somebody's current duties? Or are you looking?
It's likely, at a part-time, like we're looking at. It's much more likely you would look at a reduced load for somebody where they, if this is point four, they're teaching point six, and then would do this when they're not teaching and pick up those other classes in some other way.
So would that be sort of an illusory addition to the headcount? If, if they're already existing and they already get benefits, so to speak, like, wouldn't that be kind of a minus?
We would look to do it.
Internal hire?
And to some degree, yes. So we would look to do it by combining classes where we can, staying within guidelines. And it probably wouldn't, it might be a point two instead of a point four addition to pick up one of the classes. Like, that's, those are the things that we do when we know sort of how it all breaks out. We don't know who would be doing the work, so part of it depends on who that is and where they are. But, yeah, we would always look to do that. That's okay.
It came to me when you just described that, whether or not the coaches could be basically distributed in the same way, that they could be either substitute or teach one or two classes and coach. It just seems like coaching isn't enough for a full-time position to add on staff.
We used to have more teacher coaches than we do now. We used to really have a pretty high percentage. Now I think we're, I don't, I don't know what the number is, but it's less than it used to be. It was better when we had teacher coaches, because we know them, and they're professionals, and they're certified, and they know the kids, and they're part of the school. Now it becomes more challenging. They're all, we always encourage them to become substitutes others, but often they have other, other jobs that they're doing during the day.
Are you thinking of putting in a coach that's also teaching?
Are you talking about the math coach or athletic coach?
No, the math coach.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Cassie. I didn't, I was, I'm sorry.
I think there was a misunderstanding.
Okay, I did, I jumped to the athletics as well. I apologize. No, that's all right.
Dr. Lutzy and I were on the same wavelength.
That's all right. The math coach will be a one point oh position that we look to hire. I do think that we have some very talented internal folks who I think would be interested, which is why what I anticipate happening in the budget was that somebody with experience in our district would be our best choice for the math coach, and then we would backfill that position with, with a new hire, who would be at the lower level.
Okay. So, look, I think at this point, unless there's further questions on this, what I suggest moving forwards is the following, is that if there's an appetite for a proposal for a cut to the budget, that it be contemplated, formulated, presented as a motion at our meeting on April second, which we've done in the past, and we can have further discussion. I'm sure Dr. Lutzy will be here, and he's.
I will.
Extremely effective advocate for his positions, and I'm sure he'll be prepared to defend. And as any other department head as well. Again, this is not unique to the department, the Board of Ed at all. So that's always suggests we proceed. So are there any other questions for Dr. Lutzy at this time?
I don't have questions. I just have a brief comment.
Go ahead, Mark.
For me. I didn't understand any of this before I joined town council. It's been very enlightening to me. You know, an overwhelming majority of the increase in your budget and all the other budgets is this contractually agreed salary increases. So my big encouragement to you, and I've heard from colleagues of mine here on this, on this body, that you do a great job negotiating those things. I just encourage you to continue doing that great job negotiating as, as best you can for the Board of Education, for the Town of New Canaan, with the unions and all the departments. I hope they do that. Board of Ed is about sixty-three percent of the total town budget, right? If we drop every single one of the FTEs that the Board of Ed is asking, I'm assuming that's about eight hundred thousand dollars or six point seven FTEs. That saves less than half of one percent on the, the amount that has to be raised by taxation. I'm satisfied with all the explanation I've gotten from you about why you want these FTEs. I may not agree, I may not think a math coach is necessary. What do I know? I'm not a teacher, I'm not in your position. But I do understand that what this town has asked you to maximize is student outcomes. And based on the data that I've seen, New Canaan does a heck of a job maximizing student outcomes. So if the citizenry of New Canaan is willing to lower those outcomes, then I'm willing to chop into a budget to get there. I don't hear that coming. And I've heard a great explanation from you about your budget and why what you believe is needed is needed. And so that's, that's just my comment. So thank you for your time and for your explanation. It's been very educational for me.
Well said.
Okay, then that'll be it. We have a motion to adjourn. Maria, seconded. Kim, thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.